Okay, I'd like to call the Ellis County Commission Meeting to order. Can we all stand please for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to our pride, the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Bobby, can you call, roll please?
Commissioner Nathan Leicher.
Here.
Chair Noel Younger.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Burgess.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, the order of business, everything stays same. Prior minutes, everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yes, look good to me.
Okay. Also the consent agenda, everybody take a look at those?
Yep. I move to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Any issues from people in the public? Nope, nobody's jumping up. Appreciate everybody for coming. And monthly financial report.
I look good, I move to approve the monthly financial report. I don't know if we need to make a motion on that, do we? Looks good.
Okay. Wood River Energy, Mike Thomas?
Good morning commissioners, just for a heads up, Mike Thomas wasn't able to attend the meeting today, but I do have a phone number to call him in, so we'll, I told him here right before 8:35, we'd give him a call. So I can dial him up and get him on the phone, is there anything that you'd like to discuss before we do give him a call?
Did we want to look through what's there first before we call him up?
Anybody have any questions on that?
Really have any, what, are we on a three-year contract currently?
Correct, and it ends, I believe in May.
Okay, and what's the current price on that contract?
That I couldn't tell you.
That would be a question we ask him, okay.
Yeah, he might be able to look that up for you.
Things all, that's the.
Is this normal to go through, is Wood River the only company that we've gone through or that does this contracting of gas prices?
Correct, they're, so we have the Midwest Energy gas bills that come for all of our facilities, and then the gas product that actually comes to Midwest Energy is through Wood River Energy, so we can hedge through them.
Okay.
That's who we get our bill from monthly for our different buildings.
Okay.
It used to be all buildings getting through one bill from Midwest Energy, but then they separated the commodity from the actual delivery charge.
Okay.
Probably.
About a year ago?
Yeah, maybe eight to 12 months ago.
Not quite a year.
Oh. Okay. So this is, the split bill is relatively new then?
Correct.
Right.
Anything else, Michael? Nate?
I don't.
Yeah?
I will give him a call.
This is Mike.
Hey Mike, this Darren Myers with Ellis County.
Darren, how you doing?
Good, I do, just so you know, you're on speakerphone right away at the commission meeting, and we are live, so.
Okay.
I can turn it over to you to start visiting with the commission, I guess.
Sure, sounds good. So Darren had asked me to put together some pricing options, and I got, maybe talk just a little bit about natural gas market here first, and we'll talk, and I'll try to make this brief, but try to break this into two different sections as how I tend to look at it, that being short-term and longer term. Short-term kind of being the next, I don't know, eight, 12 months, and longer term being 12 months and beyond, obviously. So when you look at the short-term natural gas picture, two things happened over the last six or eight months that really helped this market come down. I'm sure you're probably seeing, natural gas prices have gotten very cheap on the NYMEX. And really, the two things that happened there to push it down were a liquefied natural gas plant down in Texas that actually had a minor explosion that freed up 2 billion cubic feet per day to the market. That's about a little over 2% of daily production that was able to come back to the markets. That was actually a pretty big boost. And the second thing was, we just didn't see a cool winter materialize in any of the higher concentrated population areas, you know, Chicago and cities such as that, so we just didn't see the winter demand for the natural gas. So those two things actually pushed the natural gas market down, at least on a temporary basis. So I think we'll probably, since we've got plentiful storage reserves right now, I think we'll probably see pretty soft prices for the near term, and you know, I'm not saying that we're not going back to $4 to $5 anytime soon on the board, because we probably will, but still, in relative terms, those are pretty cheap prices. Longer term, demand is just going to push this market, it has the likely of pushing this market higher and higher, both domestic demand, but also liquefied natural gas exports. And that's really something to kind of key on, because if you go back to six years to 2016 or seven years now, again, the United States actually exported about a half a billion cubic feet per day, and right now, we are exporting anywhere between 12 and 14 billion cubic feet per day. That's slated to grow to 20 billion cubic feet over the next two years, and could actually go as high as 27 or 28 over the next five, six years, and that's with plants that are already, number one, some being built, but all of them being improved. So that, we literally can see ourselves over the next six to eight years in a position where the United States has the capability of exporting as much of, as much as 25, 26, 27% of their daily production. So I think that longer term, that puts a, maybe a stronger floor on natural gas prices. But really, what I think entities such as Ellis County, hospitals, schools, and things like that really need to be focusing on is avoiding the spikes like we saw February 21. And I don't remember what your exposure was, but there were a lot of folks that had quite a little bit of exposure, and it didn't really take very much exposure as it, in terms of volume, at the prices that we saw in February 21 to run up a huge bill. So I think my, what I would encourage you guys to do is to continue to stay hedged out, three to four years at all times, and we need to hedge the winter volumes, December, January, February volumes that you use, we need to probably inflate those slightly just to help avoid another spike, such as we saw in February 21 impacting you again. I've got some prices for one, two, and three years, and they're all, even if one year being about $5.10, two years at $5.00, just under 50 cents, and three years, just under $5.88, excuse me, under $5.80. So while it's not, you know, three and a half, $4.00 gas, it does still allow you to lock in a relatively cheap price, especially when you compare to the price spikes that we've seen. Even over the last year, we've seen NYMEX rolling excessive $8 and pushing over $9 for a couple of months there, so when you look at those, the prices that are available for, you know, three-year term versus what we've seen, not only this past year, but in yesterday, we've seen, we've seen over $12 gas many times over the last 25 years, so that would be my recommendation to you, and at this point, I'll just answer any questions.
Excuse me, this is Nathan Leicher. What is our current price that we're locked into? Do you know that?
Yeah, I could find that here real quick here. That would be a second. I had that up, I had to look up different questions. While I'm looking that up, any other questions that come to mind for you guys?
When do we approve the price? Our contract goes to May, you have current prices on here for one, two, and three years, but when do we actually know what the price would be?
Did you hear that, Mike?
I did not.
So Mr. Burgess asked, while you're looking that up, is, once we have a contract put together to lock in a price for whatever time length that may be determined, when will that price be determined within that contract? Because it would change a little bit from where it's at today, correct?
Say that one more time, I didn't completely follow that.
If the commission decides to proceed, a contract would be drawn up, and then when would the price be available as to what would be locked into that contract?
Well, it's okay, yeah, so what I'm actually quoting there starts in July, so it'd go July to June each year, so depending on obviously how many years you wanted to go there, I'm struggling to find that, I apologize.
So that, just say the three-year price at $5.80, that would be still good today, and it would go into effect in July?
Yeah, so that's the price that's available today for that three-year timeframe, and it would actually start in July, because I'm almost positive you actually have some gas hedge through June this year, I believe. I'm trying to find it, for some reason I'm struggling, so I apologize.
I'm going to ask a dumb question, because I don't know, I honestly don't know what I'm looking at, $5.80 is what? And it says plus fuel, $5.80 per unit, per what?
Yeah, so, and I can barely hear you, so I apologize, but I apologize also for utilizing the units, it's a little bit different than Midwest Energy. Midwest Energy bills in firms, so $5.80 per MMBTU, which is roughly equivalent to an MCF, is equivalent to 58 cents per firm on Midwest Energy. So when you look at prices online, for instance, in NYMEX or whatever, those are priced in MMBTUs.
Okay.
And what is the current, if we were not locked in, what is today's current price?
Yeah, so spot prices are very low right now, especially for these shoulder months here, March and April, you'd be paying around $3.50.
Okay.
And then, and I apologize, Darren, I'll just send you the current hedges, for some reason it's not allowing me to log into that system today, but also, just looking at for comparison, Midwest Energy's pricing, it's ran fairly high over the last several months here. So Midwest Energy for, Midwest Energy for February gas was 646, 647, roughly, actually, the limited event Yuriad was almost eight bucks, but I'm going to leave that out, because that's coming off, so that's not a fair comparison. January was $8.63, December was $8.56, and then both October and November were in the mid-sixties, and then you saw last September, October, well over $9 in MCF, that's without the winter in that Yuriad.
And how much volume have we, I guess, purchased over the last three years?
Mike, do you remember that discussion that we had on how much we actually hedged out? Because we didn't, we don't actually take out 100% of what we use, I think we were at 70% of that, was that correct, Mike?
Yeah, Jeff typically would do 65 or 70%, almost all the time. Let's see here.
Basically, if I, correct me if I say this wrong, but that's 65 to 70%, so if we know that we're, we estimate that we're going to use a certain amount, we only hed 70, 65, or 70% of that, the other 30% come back to what's called the, is it the daily, daily price?
Well, so actually, actually, the way I prefer to structure that is to where we have the bull, so let's use that example, let's say you hedge 65% of your monthly historical values, I would prefer to have the, most of that balance based upon, on your forecasted monthly volumes, to be priced off a first-of-month index, and then any volume above that amount, so once you take your hedge amount, and then the first-of-month amount, any volume used above that to be based off the gas daily, daily. The reason I say that is, gas daily, daily is what cost everybody so much in the month of February of 21. We saw, if you guys can remember that, that event, we saw prices, Southern Star actually traded as high as over $600 per MCF, and that happened for President's Day weekend, when trading on a Thursday, I believe, actually set the price for a four-day weekend, and that was all based off of the daily price. So in reference, a good comparison for you there is, while gas daily prices are spot prices, is another good term for that, went over $600 for that timeframe, we only saw the NYMEX go from literally mid to high $2 into the mid-3s for that same timeframe. So the NYMEX did not move with the spot price of gas during that timeframe, and those, quite honestly, are the times when we've really got to prepare for, and not, not only do we not want our customers to have that exposure to another like event, we're not going to put ourselves in a position where we have that exposure to that event either.
Mike, will you go out any further than three years?
We do, we can actually go out for five years, obviously, further out, you go, it gets a little bit more expensive each year that you add on, but we can actually go for five years. So what I would recommend there is, if you wanted to do that, actually, we could do it now, to at least get us through that fifth winter, so we wouldn't be able to go all the way out through June of '28. Right now, that could certainly go out through March of '28, right now, to get you through that winter.
As I see it, we're shipping all of our prime commodity overseas, so that's why I was asking about the five-year contract.
Yeah, you know, to be real honest to think with you guys, I just think that going into these energy markets without some protection, and I lean toward a heavier protection than a lighter one, meaning more of your volume, I just think that it's probably naive to think that we're not going to see energy prices going up, and to realize, you know, looking at, you know, $5 to $6 gas versus $3 to $4 gas is obviously an increase, but man, we can afford $5 to $6 gas, we can't afford $15, $20, and $100 gas. That's my position on it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I have no more questions.
Michael?
Yeah, I don't have any further questions, I do, I mean, my general gut feeling is a longer contract, three years, makes more sense just to hedge out farther and kind of get it off our plate a little bit, so I'd probably lean that way, but I guess we don't have to make a decision today, so.
Right. So Michael, what you need from us then would be?
Yeah, so, and obviously, I'm sure you guys will want to talk about it, and I'm not saying you have to make a decision today if we want to, you know, look at it another time, we obviously can, but just let me know what you want to do as far as, if you, number one, if you do want to get some gas hedge, number two, what type of monthly percentage you want to get done, and how far out you actually want to go.
And I guess my, the other extreme to this is, we don't have to hedge anything, right? We can just pay the bill as it comes, right?
That is correct, you can go 100% naked.
Okay, and that bill, but we'd still be paying Wood River that way, right?
Yes.
Just, okay, just so, because we got a commodity bill, and we have a delivery bill, right? Okay.
If we do anything, it would just be based on the rate, so like he said, the last six months, eight months that he went through, instead of being paying this, whatever you would come through here, $5, we would be paying $8 to $9 a unit instead, so our bills would have been at about 70 or 80% over those six to eight months, higher than what they would have been now.
Yeah. And by hedging the year, but throughout the year, it should remain fairly steady. If you're not, you're going with whatever.
You'll have months like right now, where it's, or what you said, the last couple months, but if it, you have a month that's three, but the next month could be eight, the goal is to.
Yeah, so the other thing to keep in mind there, one of the things we've also seen, and I'm trying to be brief here, but one of the things we've also seen is the basis differential, which, if you're not familiar with commodities, maybe don't understand that, but in very simple terms, the basis differential is the difference between localized price gas, the Southern Star gas in this particular instance, because that's the index that we use and pipeline that we deliver off of, versus the NYMEX. In January, we saw a NYMEX go off the board at $4.75, and Southern Star landed at $8.43, so literally $3.70 over the board, and in February, we saw a very similar situation where NYMEX went off at $3.12, and Southern Star went off at $5.20. So there's been a huge separation with basis during those peaking months, particularly December, January, February, which kind of going back to what I said, even if you only did a partial hedge, let's say you did 75% of monthly volumes, I would probably still encourage you to do something heavier for those winter months.
When do we need to, I mean, is there a timeline on when we need to make this decision?
No, quite honestly, I do think you have some time going into the spring and summer here before, I don't expect the, especially the third years, to move too much between now and then, so I think you've got some time, yes.
Okay.
All right.
If we, if you see a change on the IMAX, would you contact us if we don't have a decision before then? If you see something?
Yeah, absolutely, if we see, if we see those, start to see those deferred years really come back, that's what we're talking about, the deferred years in your case, if we start to see those come off even further, you know, we'll sure reach out to Darren, let him know what's available.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you, I appreciate if you have questions, let me know.
Okay.
Okay, see you.
I think at this time, I'd like to see us maybe hold off just a little bit with locking things in.
That is a fluctuating commodity.
If you'd like me to add it to maybe last week of May, for a tentative agenda, just to see where we're at, give an update?
Probably, so that, our current contract goes through May?
I thought it was through May, it sounds like it goes through June, and then the new one would start if we.
Okay.
Start in July.
Yeah, we probably ought to.
Yeah, at least readdress it in May.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Don, with the Western Kansas Child Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, folks, my name is Don, I'm with the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. First and foremost, let me thank, I'd like to really thank you folks here at Ellis for your continued support in our goal to heal the trauma suffered by adults and children throughout your community here, and it's been, you've been an amazing community partner, we hope to keep that partnership. The stats that I've kind of brought forth to you today, down here on this bottom, will be this first quarter of the year here, 2023, 33 forensic interviews, 23 children seen in ongoing therapy, 44 children provided advocacy, we provided advocacy to 44 children, eight currently in the youth mentoring and seeking advocacy as well, it looks like there's been 19 sessions of said mentoring slash advocacy as well, five medical exams, medical sane exams, and then six courts, and then that's the bottom total there, 119 children served, and 306 services provided to Ellis County here. Again, I can't thank you folks enough for kind of aiding us in our mission here to do the best we can to lay the groundwork for these children. Goal is to provide, help assist, you know, productive adults and kind of work through the traumas unfortunately that have experienced. We do, we did actually have our Haze buses up and running again as well, too, they've named it Star, so you might see that here and about are dispatched out of this area, but since we do have the office here, you folks. are dispatched out of this area. Uh, but since we do have the office here, your you folks' services are seen in our office here, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Look, are are a number of these uh services and and are those some ongoing ones or are those new, new to the system?
Uh, more than likely, they're ongoing. Uh, the children that are there uh seeking therapy services, more than likely, they're are 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 ongoing. Um, new, I'm not for sure on that. I can I can get that to you folks if you'd like the new, any new cases that have kind of came up. I don't know if that would violate any sort of confidentiality, um, but I can definitely probably pull up that number. Um, but.
If you could, on your next update, if you could just, you know, uh, let us know how many new people are being and and just introduced into the system, maybe a very general broad.
Sure, okay.
Brush, it'd be interesting to to know how much we have ongoing and how much new that we're seeing.
Absolutely. Uh, and I know several the the several of the cases I know have been ones that are about to start heading to to court, just displacement from COVID as well, too. I know we're seeing that in several of the other counties as well, too, cases that are two or three years old. We're seeing finally uh make it to jury or some sort of plea agreement. We've seen quite a few plea agreements, which, um, yeah.
Do you do you see the trend kind of going that you may start seeing more or may start getting more of the workload starting coming off?
Um, it's hard to say, to be honest. I mean, as soon as kind of school starts, uh, school ends, I'm sorry here, when uh summer break comes about. Um, fortunately, these children aren't as front aren't in front of mandatory mandatory reporters as often. Um, so it'd be kind of hard to say of new cases. I don't, it'd be hard to say. Uh, but I know as soon as as soon as they're not in front of a mandatory reporter, that's usually when we do see things drop off, only because it's not being reported, unfortunately.
Okay.
So.
Mike, you have anything?
No, thank you for for the update and for the work you do. Appreciate it.
Again, thank you, folks. We do appreciate your support.
We also would like to thank you for what you guys do. Um, how's your staffing? You fully staff?
Um, last I understood, uh, the the final position, I believe, was filled for a their child therapist. I remember if I remember correctly, that was filled. Um, so knock on wood, we're we we're an agency that can say that we're okay, but I don't want to put that out in the world because then someone will be heading out tomorrow. So uh, it's usually how things work, unfortunately, but uh, we're we're in a very good spot right now. Of course, we could always use more help.
So what are we looking at as far as numbers, employee numbers?
Employee numbers, I believe is twenty-five is what I remember the last Kelly reporting.
Okay.
Um, I'd have to double check that for sure. That but that is agency-wide, not just here.
Sure.
Not just here in Ellis, so agency-wide, we twenty-five, I believe, is what we're sitting at, so.
Well, thank you again for your services.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the support, folks.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jay Harris with the Cottonwood Extension.
Good morning, everyone. Um, just wanted to take this opportunity to come in and introduce myself a little bit. Um, I met with Darren here a couple of weeks ago, talked about a couple of different things. Um, again, my name is Jay Harris. I'm the new executive director or district director for the Extension District, Cottonwood Extension District, which of course is Ellis and Barton County. Um, been in that role for about four weeks now, so still getting used to everything. Along with that, I'm also the Community Vitality Agent, so I will be doing some work with um cities, uh, different entities in the county to try to find grants for them, do anything that they might be looking at um as far as improving their cities, whatever it might be on on that range. Um, I used to sit on that side of the table. I was a county commissioner in Ness County for two terms, so uh uh I know what uh you guys do a little bit. So um prior to taking the job with the Cottonwood District, I was the ag teacher at TMP Marion. I'd started up that program seven years ago, um, started up an FFA chapter for them. So uh, that's what I was involved with before that. Um, so moved to Hays seven years ago from Ness County. Like I said, I was a commissioner there, farmed in Ness County, uh, was a coach, did lots of different things there and saw the opportunity to move here to Hays. Um, but Darren brought to me um kind of the occupancy agreement that we would like to look at with uh the county for the use of our building. Um, I think, you know, it's it's something that Barton County does um with their facility, and it's just something I really think we need to continue to look at. Um, it's a great facility for us, uh, plenty of room there, and uh it works real well for what we're doing. So um, I think I really want to continue that discussion and try to get something worked out that that what we can do there. So like I said, just big thing today, I wanted to introduce myself so that you guys know who I am, and if you ever want to come down and visit with me, we can continue to to look into that. So um, do you have any questions of me at this time?
I really don't. You've served two terms. You know more about what what I'm doing than I am. I'm trying to figure out what I'm supposed to do, so.
What was the big draw to Ellis County for you?
Um, one of the reasons, one of the main reasons we moved to Ellis County um was for TMP, um, for my son to attend school there and for me to teach. So um, being from Ness County, Ellis County was a lot of what we did, you know, for shopping and everything else. Been in Hays, you know, a lot since, you know, over my lifetime. Um, I'm from Ness County originally. Had went to K-State, was in Nebraska for a few years, moved back to Ness County, just the draw back to Western Kansas and, you know, Ellis County is very centralized area for a lot of different things going on. So, yeah, it was a big draw to get us back to this area, so.
Okay. Well, glad to have you on board with the Extension District.
Thank you. Yeah, I I'm excited about it. Um, I know the previous director, Donna Krug, was in the Great Bend office, um, and I know you had met her a few times, or she had been in a few times. So I'd like to keep that uh going with that communication between us, so. And that would be the one difference, you know, to when I was a commissioner in Ness County, some of the the extension, that was when it was still a county extension. So it's a lot different now than when we go to a district where we have our own mills, so our own mill levee. So, yeah, it's it's a little different. But uh, like I said, I, you know, we appreciate the use of the building. I want to continue to move forward on that so that we can stay in that building and and be able to utilize that space.
I'd like to thank you for getting, you know, an FFA started at TMP also and.
Yeah.
Educating kids and also for stepping up for this. We need people like you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Nice to meet you all. If you ever need any que- have any questions, stop in, see me, give us a call down there.
Okay.
Glad to visit with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, I guess we need some fingerprints. Scott?
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Scott Brown, Ellis County Sheriff. So um, I come before you today to talk about our fingerprint machines. We've got two of them currently that we utilize. One is uh for the criminal side, which is back in our booking area. The other one is in the front where we do civilian, and then we do a lot of the city prints for them. For municipal, they come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and so we do those prints. Uh, we started a few years ago, the civilian side, where we started charging ten dollars. The reason being is we had a lot of people from surrounding counties coming in because they were charging twenty in their counties and whatever, but we didn't want to charge too much to our people. Um, secondly, we have a a huge amount of uh people from Fort Hays that come in to secure their nursing licenses and those types of things, and it literally takes up an immense amount of time of our staff. So we thought that was pretty fair. Um, with that said, um, and with the budgets coming up, I started looking at a few things that perhaps we could utilize to offset some of that cost without raising our budgets always. And so I'm asking that, uh, obviously, uh, we make about ten seventeen thousand uh a year. That varies, and the reason being is um we're awarded forty-five through the courts when they're sentenced uh for whatever. However, sometimes those people don't follow through with those, and so therefore they end up back in jail. So therefore, we don't receive any money. And then there's a calculation of formula that's uh devised by the courts, and we get a percentage of that. So they're also paying on all the other fines and court costs and attorney fees and that. So we only may get ten dollars out of that, and it may be a duration of time before we receive that. So that's kind of a loose number. So I don't want, if the numbers come in less, I don't want you to go, how come we're so much less? Um, so it's it just varies, but that's on average, and I think you guys saw the attachment and can see where that came from. Um, so um, with that said, um, I'm asking you to consider uh to allot that to a line item or to um our uh capital, whichever you guys feel is best, and Darren may have some insight into this. Um, so we can utilize that for fingerprint machines. We've got one that we've had for about two years now. Um, so and then we've got one with about four years, so we'll be looking at rotating one of those out here soon. Um, and then there's a licensing fee every year um that that we budget for uh in order to cover that. And so if possible, and you guys agree, I would like to um have that assigned or earmarked uh for replacement of those equipment. So questions?
Do you still use ink and paper?
We do very seldom. Very, we used to do it uh for concealment, and now they've uh updated systems, and so now we're not using much of it, but we do have it, so.
Well, that's what everybody thinks when you go get a fingerprint.
Yeah, we we still have it, and if the machine goes down, we can still continue with business. So, yes, yes.
Michael?
Yeah, you for civilians stuff, like, do we, I guess, do we market that? Where else can they get fingerprints? Like, for, I know the school district also does for teachers and.
Yeah, they actually bought their own, I think, and they're doing theirs because they have so many people.
Okay.
Um, and and, you know, uh, the nonprofits, we don't charge coming in um by, you know, they're nonprofits. Um, so we we don't do that, and it's really, ten bucks isn't isn't over the top, but yet it's going to help replace those machines that we're using, so.
That's, you know, about seventeen hundred fingerprints.
Yeah.
Processing, that's.
Yeah, eighteen something is actually.
She charged ten dollars per print, per finger.
What?
See how many they want, how many fingers.
They all go together. We don't do the.
I it makes sense to me, I think. It's we it dedicates, I mean, you put in a line item so we know specifically where it's going to go if we have to replace the machines eventually anyway, instead of trying, you know, essentially backtracking to say, yeah, we got to buy a machine for whatever it costs. Where does that money come from? Well, it came from fingerprints. So I think this just make, it does make it cleaner on the budget, so.
I agree.
I think so.
Uh, approximately, how much time does it take to do a a fingerprint per person or or?
If it's me, a long time. If it's uh the guys that do it all the time, with a couple of minutes. Uh, they're really, really fast. Depends upon how how flexible that person is also, because if they have a hard time rolling that finger, it makes it a little bit more difficult uh for them, but they're pretty fast. They they kick them out pretty quickly. It takes them longer to fill out their paperwork than it does actually um to actually get fingerprinted, so.
And we currently do, like you said, in there, the fingerprinting fee for Hays is waived or?
Um, so we discussed it briefly about, not here, i- i- with uh Chief Schibler and myself, um, but nothing's been decided in regards to that. Um, there could be a fee applied to it, and they would do like the county does and basically apply it towards the fines and that, and then we would receive that. Um, now, keep in mind that um if they eventually move out, they may very well buy their own machine, and that revenue would go away. But for the time being, that would be something we could collect, that we could charge. We just haven't done it at this point in time.
Okay, all right. And I was going to ask the same thing as Nate, how how many man hours are in it and?
Yeah, it's it some days are.
If they're so difficult people, then.
Yeah, yeah. And and the city uh city of Hays, they have quite a few that come in. Uh, we run them through pretty quickly, but it it's probably an hour to an hour and a half of uh of of staff down there running through and getting things put in the system and that, because there's a little follow-up. They have to enter some stuff, some data and things like that, so.
It it only makes good sense to to do that, so.
Okay, gentlemen, any more discussion?
No more.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Say your motion?
Yep. Uh, I moved to approve fingerprint revenue collected within a calendar year to be moved to a designated line item to be used for the purchasing of fingerprint machines and for yearly licensing expenses for fingerprint machines.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Did you have something, Darren, for?
Just for clarification, for a single line item. Um, so we will have a line item in the sheriff's budget that identifies fingerprint revenue, and then we'll have a additional expense. So you actually won't wouldn't see the seventeen thousand, or if that fluctuates or changes every year. The sheriff does put a amount away in capital. So say it's a hundred thousand for this year or the budget for next year, it would be increased to a hundred and seventeen thousand. So you'll see the revenue coming in. You won't see the exact seventeen thousand coming out. It'll be combined with the other transfer to capital, so that way.
Okay.
It's basically in and out and then goes to the fund sixteen for him to be able to purchase the equipment in future years.
What's the availability, the availability on them?
On fingerprints or or our our staff?
Your staff.
Um, we do most of them on after ten, uh, Monday through Friday, um, and then um because in the mornings, kind of chaotic getting to courts. Um, and then we will on occasion, even if we're not supposed to be down there, we'll go down if there's some of that comes in and needs one real quick to get it done.
All right.
So, yeah, we're we're there to serve the people, and so we do so.
Very good.
So.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Brandon on the annual report.
Morning, Commissioners. Brendan McKay, Ellis County Public Works Director. Good morning. So before you is our twenty twenty-two annual county engineers or road supervisors report. Each year, every county submits this report to KDOT. Years past, we would just get a seventy-page packet back from the state that kind of broke down every county's information. So you could see and compare neighboring counties, what they're budgeting, what they're doing with their funds. And both Commissioner Younger and Liker saw this past KAC, KDOT has unveiled the CLIP tool, the Kansas Local Infrastructure Planning Tool. So that uses the information that county provides based on these, so you can go back and see historic trends for how the money's been spent, and figure out what does it cost roughly per mile of gravel road we have, what we spend on maintenance on it, compare that to similar counties. You can also break it down by county unit or county township or rural county highway system, which is like county township, but with more steps. And it also has a future planning tool, so you can look at what your budgeting needs are based on changes you can make to different variables, whether valuations or improving, you want to add twenty miles of paved road, this is what it's going to look like, what you'll have to budget in the future. So don't know if anyone of my predecessors have brought this before the commission before. Do you have any questions on it?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay.
Just sticking out. It'd be nice, uh, and I think you'll, you and I have talked about this in past, of what we can do and what what we have done.
Yeah.
And maybe the difference between them, but uh, which we'll get more little later today, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's something that it says six miles of chip seal. There's also six miles of overlay. All those overlay miles were also sealed over, so it's truly twelve mile, at least twelve miles of sealing chip seals. And then because the title says chip seals, in the past, the county may not have included their scrub seals and fog seals in that line item.
Okay.
Because now there's multitude of ways to treat a road surface. This document is from two thousand and eleven. There's been some updates and some changes. Like, one of the things in there, it says bridge maintenance and bridge rehabilitation. It's to get the sufficiency of a bridge back above eighty. They don't look at sufficiency rating anymore. That's not a criteria for any of their grant programs. So there are some changes that I think they'll be making in the future to properly reflect poor-condition bridges, because you could have a brand-new bridge that everything's great on, but could have a real low sufficiency rating because of channel alignment. So they're looking more at the structures now. So I suspect that they'll make some changes to their wording on this document going forward. But it's our operating budget and any. But it's our operating budget and any funds we use for structures and road rehabilitation out of Fund 78. So that's why. My budget truly wasn't 6.9 million dollars last year. That was just including the funds from the FAS 450 bridge that was reconstructed, and then the Cathedral Avenue rehabilitation and reconstruction on the first phase. I'll get out of you guys' hair then. Thank you. Do you have something, Neil?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll let you.
Oh.
I'm gonna step out on this one. I'll excuse myself.
Okay. Next, we'll move to the Midwest Energy Agreement with the radio tower for the North Tower. Darren?
As the commission is aware, back in December of 2022, the prior commission approved the replacement of the public safety radio tower equipment, which is commonly referred to in public safety as the North Tower. And I should have had the sheriff come up and talk, because he did such a great job before. He could have continued, but he's been kind of the lead on this project, working with Midwest Energy, working with Motorola, and, but essentially, as this project moves forward, one of the things that we needed to do was to either replace a tower or rent space on a new, on a existing tower. And the decision was made purely on cost of a new tower, just the tower itself, not to include the infrastructure to get there, utilities, electricity, fiber. It was going to be over 600,000. And luckily, I don't remember how we found it, but Midwest Energy has a tower in that location. They said that we could rent space off of it, and they then also agreed to work with us on modifying their yard, their fenced-in area, their, all the connections that are there. And long-term then would be to create an agreement between us and Midwest Energy to rent that space on the tower. So they've been very great to work with. It's been very nice, very pleasant. They're doing an outstanding job on the project. Scott takes pictures and sends it to me. The, the new building has been installed, and fiber and power have been run to it. So they're getting close to hooking up the, the building to the towers. There's a connection between the two called the Ice Bridge that houses all the cabling that connects between the two buildings. So it's getting very close. Two weeks ago, we've received a couple pallets of equipment already to be put in there. So once the building is done, we'll be moving the equipment up there. But this agreement basically states that we'll pay Midwest Energy $1,000 a year for rent, and we'll be able to have access to the facility and use their tower for it. So as you can see, the, the big cost advantage of here was replacing the tower would have been additional 600,000 compared to $1,000 a year in, in tower rent from existing tower that Midwest Energy takes good care of. And it's also a partnership with KDOT by hooking all this into the state radio system. So we are asking to approve the agreement with Midwest Energy for the North Tower.
Okay. Sheriff, did you have anything you wanted to add on that? Are you good?
Midwest Energy's been great to work with.
Okay.
And, and, I guess, is it a, I guess, a permanent rental agreement or just a?
It goes by yearly, but as long as we would ever have a radio tower up there, this would be continued every year.
At a thousand or?
Essentially permanent.
Okay.
Unless we would ever find the funds to build a new tower and move our equipment. But I don't think it would be, if we would have had to have done that, I don't know if this project would have came about because of the additional, like I say, 600,000-ish to build that tower out.
Nope. I, thanks for all the hard work ahead of time. Makes it easy on us to make the, the motion. So I move to approve the attached agreement with Midwest Energy regarding the tower rent for public safety radio equipment.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Agreement will be signed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. 2024 Budget Discussion, Mr. Darren?
I'll try to make this shorter than last week. But as the commission knows, last week, we went over a spreadsheet, kind of showed you some assumptions of what the forecast could be based on different variables, on how the budget is presented from year to year. Commissioner Younger was absent, but we were able to meet yesterday for lunch to go over the same information that we did at the meeting. So now it comes to the point that the, the calendar is tentatively put together, and it's time to pass the work off onto the department heads and elected officials to start preparing their 2024 budgets for the commission to see. And that process, as we stated last week, would be after your, after this discussion today, we would reconvene with the executive team, talk about the budget, and then they would start putting that budget together. It would be due back to me by mid-May for me to combine all the budgets in together and present them back to the commission at the first meeting in June. At that meeting, that would be your first initial budget in completion of what it would actually look like for the following year. And the week after that, on the 13th, is when the outside agencies come in to discuss. It would make, we wouldn't make decisions. You would just hear at that point their presentations of what they are requesting to be added into the budget. So with that, there's a couple bullet points that I put on the agenda item, just for areas of discussion, just to see if there sparked any interest, any thoughts, comments, concerns, changes that you would like to see based on the overall budget, the revenue neutral rate, and anything that you want to see changed. For example, one of the biggest changes in our budget the last couple of years is the amount of money that's being put back into reserves to do capital projects, any staffing levels. And then, as I said, with the outside agencies, with your direction today, I will be sending them a letter. Actually, I put it together, and I get it to the clerk's office, and they send it out to the outside agencies. But we do have communication with them, so that way I can pass along your direction as to what you would like to see for those agencies. So with that, take any questions.
Anything, Nate?
Questions or statements?
Both.
Well, I guess, I mean, questions, no. I guess, as far as my thought process going forward on the budget, all of our department heads are taxpayers, and we're all taxpayers in this county. And I, I'd just like to say that I want to be respectful of all the, all the taxpayers, and I'd like to see our budget, I, I'd like to see the departments try and maintain, but be respectful of the taxpayers. But I want them to be realistic, too, and try and look into the future and see things. Obviously, the economy is going to be changing. So be realistic with what they bring, and maybe have, have a reason for, if there's an increase, to explain it to us, so we know why we may have to increase a budget to, you know, account for different things. Such as, one of the things I'd like to see, we've started making transfer, transfers into our capital reserves for bridges and stuff. And I, I think we need to start pulling the trigger and getting some bridges, you know, replacement, and, and move them up in the queue. Maybe whether we get grants or not to help, grants are great. I welcome them. But we need to start making some improvements. And we need, because even if we make the decision today to, to do a bridge, you know, it'd be a year and a half until anything happens, or until it'd be complete. So we need to be looking ahead that what we're going to do is going to take some time.
I guess my overall thoughts right now, that kind of, with the roads and bridges are probably top of my mind right now. And I pulled up the CLIP tool as Brendan was talking. That's a budget I would like to, I guess, expand of, of the department budgets, not the, not at the expense of other departments. But I guess that would be my challenge. If I look at that CLIP tool, we have 185 bridges. Eleven of them are in poor. So my challenge would be, what would it take to do 10 bridges in the next four years? It would take a lot. But that's, I think we have to start thinking about that mindset. We have 141 miles of paved roads. So in my head, I'm thinking, you know, what if we were to get on a 20-year rotation? What would it take to do seven miles a year? So that, you know, I don't know if we can answer that question in our budget this year, but I think that's the question I want to start pushing when I, for the next several years, as far as what it's going to take to do that, and build our reserve so we can, you know, and look at your note here, we're, we're six years away from, from meeting that budget, budget policy of 25%. So what would it take to move that up to four years away and get those reserves built up so we can start chunking bridges and roads and other things, instead of just waiting till a bridge collapses and then having to do it, or doing a few miles here and there? I guess that's kind of my overall mindset. Now, can we do that in next year's budget? I don't think so. But next year's in 2025 and going forward. So I think we want to look at the budget and try to push that a little bit. I've stated this before, my thoughts on revenue neutral, I think exceeding it is necessary. However, we can still, I think, be cognizant of the taxpayer and potentially still lower the mill and still exceed revenue neutral. So that would, that would still be probably my goal. I don't know what that lower number is, if it's half a mill or a mill or 10 mills, I don't know. But that would be my stance, is to, to try to lower the mill, to be cognizant of the taxpayer and what they have to pay on their property taxes. But as we've had the discussion over and over, inflation and cost of things is going up. So exceeding your revenue neutral, I think the taxpayers should just be aware that's probably what we're going to end up doing. We're going to send out the notices and let them know, and they can come in and make their, their thing. But I think we can also do our part a little bit and lower a mill a little bit. And then other areas of focus, we've had this discussion. You kind of brought it up, looking for grants. I think it's time, we've had this discussion, the county should look at, how do we either have a, a department that is a grant writer, or find an outsourced that takes grant writing for Ellis County, Hayes, Ellis, Ellis Victoria as basically their primary job? So where do we stick that in the budget? I'd still want to find that as far as staffing. So I think that's my general thoughts right now and direction. I don't know if it gives you good direction, but that's kind of my thoughts, anyway.
Just one comment, if, if I may, actually had similar contact or conversation with Commissioner Younger, or, Younger, Commissioner Liker last night. But I have had, even before that, discussions with Brendan. We are looking at, well, I'll have some information to share, or he'll have some information to share with you on the averages of what the Public Works Department has done over the last couple of years. I think it was 10-year?
He took off.
I think you'll have an average of 10 years of what they can, what they've actually done in the past compared to road maintenance. So what I've asked, and we'll have a future commission agenda item, is to, the, the averages are based on budget. If, if you're only budgeting X amount of dollars, that limits you on how much you can do. That's not necessarily what the capacity, what they can do. So what he's going to present is what he feels if they can maintain that, you, you mentioned seven miles of road, or if they could do 10 miles of road a year. If that's what they can maintain with their staffing, then we need to figure out what the funding is, the, the gap is. If, if we're only funding them for five, but they're capable of 10, how much more is that going to do? And we'll have a future commission agenda item to do that.
Okay.
And the bridges, we can, we can also add that in there as well. So that, that should be before the July individual department meetings, we'll have a, some options for you to be able to consider as he's working on his budget, on how much of a boost the, the actual operating budget for road and bridge would need to increase the amount of road maintenance would be done each year.
Okay. Well, I, I think that kind of like, like we talked, needs to go department-wide, because I know there's, there's different li, there's different things that are going to be coming and changing. You know, we can't expect everybody to stay within a, a certain amount. We just need to know what, what it's going to take, what they're seeing. You know, everybody's specific to their department. What are they seeing that they're going to need to make a change? And that's, that's, the change has to start now.
Yeah. One good example is that, is with Danita with EMS, medical supplies and equipment, or the prices and availability. Availability is bleak, but the prices are going up, and the cost of drugs and medicines and all that is going up as well. So that's, that's one thing that she's seeing that she'll probably address with you, and, and just another, for instance, outside of road and bridge that is happening.
Right. And we've already had a discussion with the sheriff on commissary and stuff like that, and meals. So we, we know it's all changing. It's just a matter of what's, what's going to happen. I don't, my crystal ball's a little cloudy.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, Commissioner Younger.
That's all right.
I'll make one more on, just looking here on, outside agencies, I think communication with them. For me, I admittedly have a little bit of a soft spot for outside agencies and funding them, making sure they're funded. So my, my direction would be, though, I think for the next couple of years, our budget looks pretty solid. You know, we show the numbers, you know, it gets a real cloudier in, in, you know, about six years or when that sales tax potentially goes away. So I think our, that should be the communication. I think, at least from my standpoint, is the outside agencies, probably for the this year, next year, their funding is, I'm going to say at least stays flat. If we could find an, an increase, I would, I would like to hope to do that. But then they should be cognizant, probably two years from now, that whatever they're requesting is probably going to be a little bit harder to hit as our budget starts to, starts that kind of downslide unless we find some other revenue sources. So, but I think as far as outside agencies, my, my personal thought is if the amount that we're funding, you know, economic growth, like Grow Hayes and those kind of things, I think there should be an equal amount towards our outside agencies to help individuals. I mean, we, we always try to drive for economic growth and, and bringing in jobs and stuff. But the other side of that, to me, is always the, the individuals, as we saw, the children and others that struggle along the way. So to me, making sure they're funded, those organizations that help those that get kind of lost in the cracks is very important. So that, that'll be my stance, at least, for the next couple of years, is to maintain them where they are.
Anything else? Myself, the capital plan for future bypasses around Hayes, if we can work with the City of Hayes on that. That's kind of one of my goals, to try to get accomplished, staying flat. Like I said, I'll agree with both other commissioners that they're coming to us, the head departments. Let's see some justification on what and why. Like, say, the roads, you know, when I first become commissioner, there wasn't a whole lot there to, to mess, you know, mess with is what I'm saying, because we had a mess, and we're finally gaining a little bit. So I would also like to see the roads and bridges addressed. I know it's hard to achieve, but we can work at that. But, and as far as employees, as long as we can give them a fair percentage to maintain what we have and our expertise in all those fields. So that's what I have.
Okay. I think pretty much hits everything. We will have a couple future agenda items to kind of narrow that focus down a little bit, as we've talked, one with Public Works in regards to their funding, and then we'll also have a future discussion once we, once you see that initial budget and what those requests come in at. And then we can put in a certain percentage aside for a budgeted percentage away for staffing increases next year for pay. And then we'll also have a discussion, department heads and elected officials have submitted requests for additional staffing as well. So once we get farther into the budget process, we'll kind of narrow into those to begin with. But as, as the budget will sit, is their, their staffing level stay the same, their percentage, or their employee personnel costs will stay the same as they are now. And then that, just so the commission is aware that the, the individual departments aren't, personnel line items aren't increased from this year, they are at status quo. We put that into a separate line item. That will be discussed at a future meeting, at what amount the commission wants to set aside for that, to be able to see what we can work with next year. So some of those decisions are easier to be made, once you kind of see where the budget's at and compared to where it's at this year.
Okay.
I think that's everything that I need for now, and I'll pass that along to staff. And so. and, so, we'll be working on numbers for the next month.
Okay.
Okay.
County Commissioner boards, Mr. Leicher?
I have none at this time.
Okay. Virgins?
If you like local government, this is going to be a couple neat weeks. Um, had some communication with Mayor McDaniel, um, I believe he's hosting Governor Kelly tomorrow, or Thursday, in Ellis, uh, for a education roundtable, and then he will also be hosting the Kansas Mayors Association on Friday and Saturday this week at, I think, the Hayes-Hilton. Um, I will be going to Washington, D.C. to try to advocate for our neck of the woods a little bit, um, and then when we get back, I think it's the following week, we have the Kansas Association of Counties will be here, so, how many county commissioners that might be, four hundred or some, probably, here in Hayes?
A couple hundred that register.
Yeah, so they'll be here, so it's kind of a big month for, um, small, local government. That's all I got.
Okay, well, thank you for, um, going to Washington for us. I, you know, at this time, so, um, I guess the only thing I had, since I was absent, I did go to the library, and I did see, uh, Mr. Virgins there for, um, you know, the legislature, and then I did attend the Shenshin meeting last night, um, so I need to get with Brandon on some of their issues over there, but, uh, also then I'd also like to wish Nathan Carleen with the Sheriff's Department, uh, happy birthday today, so, that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay? And...
We have, uh...
Executive sessions?
Okay. This time I move, uh, the Board of County Commissioners recess to executive session for fifteen minutes pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception. Uh, subject to be dis, be discussed is a, a personnel matter. Those in attendance to the commissioners, or Board of County Commissioners are Bill Jeter, Darren Myder, Myers, and Jennifer Taylor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 No decision was made?
Uh, I moved to extend the first executive session by ten minutes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 No decisions were made?
No decisions were made, so it'll be tabled.
I move to the Board of County Commissioners recessed executive session for fifteen minutes pursuant to attorney-client privilege concerning potential litigation. Those in attendance will be, to the Board of County Commissioners, are Bill Jeter, Darren Myers.
Okay. We have a motion. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I accept that whip.
Learning.
No decision has been made.
Okay. I move the Board of County Commissioners recess to executive session for 15 minutes under the following exception to the Kansas of Meetings Act pursuant to Attorney/Client privilege exception. The subject to be discussed is agreement negotiations. Those attendants will be Bill Jeter, Darren Myers, along with the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Home Affairs say aye.
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 Okay, no decision has been made.
Okay. I move the Board of County Commissioners recess to executive session for 15 minutes under the following exception to the Kansas of Meetings Act pursuant to Attorney/Client privilege exception. The subject to be discussed is agreement negotiations. Those attendants will be Bill Jeter, Darren Myers, along with the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Home Affairs say aye.
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 Okay, no decision has been made. It'll be tabled. And I'll call for adjournment at 10:49. And then, we will have our special meeting of the road tour. And that will be starting at 10:49.
Bobby, do I just sign the top line or do I gotta sign? Just the top line on both of, where they're both, where I got little arrows. Yeah, I filled everything out, so just the top line.
Okay.
I wasn't thinking when Neil signed it that he can't sign it.
I was trying to get your guys' attention to see when it was, when that tower is going to be operable. Because I know we've been working on it, so.